Want to seriously consider their concerns on an agenda item, then they can sign up for that agenda item and speak to it.
Let me get two turned.
They can potentially get however many agenda items there are as long as they're discussing that agenda item other than they open mic night.
Mr. Berry.
I guess I'm a little confused on how that differentiates from how we operate right now.
Mr. Weeble.
If there is more than three minutes, I'm opposed to that. There is no difference if they speak at the beginning of the meeting for the topic they're there to address because they will be speaking before the agenda item, which is also at the beginning of the meeting. You know, if they want to wait three, four hours in the meeting to speak before a topic, I find that a little odd. I can't embrace giving three minutes on every agenda item. We have meetings that are plenty long enough already. With all due respects to the public, if they can't say it in three minutes at the beginning of the meeting, they're free to email us, phone us, stop us on the street. We've got plenty of things to cover without adding more and more time to these meetings. All due respect.
Any else? Mr. Pownell.
One to clarify, there was a comment made, you know, what difference is that than what we've already been doing? That's one of the issues that we are to address by code at the beginning and organizing council for the years. The only reason we could have been doing it that way for 20 years, but we still need to set the stipulations at the beginning of the year.
Mr. Berry.
Could you read the motion over again?
Mr. Pownell would like to consider having an open mic night where a person could address each agenda item, and Ms. Balance amended it to three minutes per citizen.
I don't think Ms. Balance had a second.
Oh, she seconded it. That's true. She did not. That is true. So we're back.
Any further?
I like that three minute per person part. That's good.
Well, if I could ask for a second, you can second it, but I can't.
Well, Ms. Balance will get to it, okay? We're trying to take care of business here the right way.
So I can clarify the first part. If I could ask Mr. Berry, was that monthly or was it quarterly? When was the open mic night? Was it monthly?
Okay, so this is each?
At that time, it was the first Monday of the month, there was an open mic night at the beginning.
The first meeting of the month.
First meeting of the month.
Okay.
And anything respectful and concerned could be addressed.
Okay, any further discussion? Concerning Ms. Balance's amendment to the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Clarify the motion again.
Ma'am clerk, would you?
The amended motion or the original?
Ms. Balance's.
Amendment.
Ms. Balance amended it so that it would be three minutes per citizen total rather than per topic.
No. Not the way I understood it.
No. The way Mr. Pownell was wanting to set it up would be, if I understand correctly, a person could potentially have three minutes during public comments and then three minutes before any agenda item was addressed.
It could be 11 agenda items. They could sign up for three and still address under public comments, but they would have to wait until that agenda item came up instead of claiming that they were going to use their total of four three-minute periods all at one time.
I think I'll rescind my amendment to that motion. Thank you for the explanation.
Dr. Hennett.
Yeah, I don't think this is necessary at all. We have open mic right now. They can speak for three minutes, and we're going to go every single item here. We have what, 21 on it right now? It's supposed to talk three minutes of each one. We'll be here till Friday. I know, I think it's silly and I don't want anything to do with it.
Mr. Weeble.
I can't top that.
Okay. So I want to make sure that we have the motion correct. Ms. Balance withdrew her amendment, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so the original motion goes back to Mr. Pownell's open mic night on the agenda items and three minutes on each agenda item per person at the first meeting of every month. Is that correct, sir?
Open mic night, the first meeting, they can sign up for agenda items, any meeting. We just have to let the public know going in how long they're going to be able to speak on any item if they're able to address the table.
Are you clear?
No.
Okay.
All along, I'm sorry, I thought all of this had to do with one meeting per month. Now I'm thinking that you're saying that there would be open mic night plus a person could address any agenda item at any meeting throughout the month? Is that?
Yes.
We want to make sure the motion's correct. If we get that, then we'll go through the process, the voting process. Okay. Once you have a clear understanding, would you please read it back so we can be very clear for the record? And then we'll vote on it.
It seems to keep morphing, but at this moment, what I understand it is that you'd like to have an open mic night at the first meeting of the month, and a person can comment about any subject up to three minutes, plus a person could at any meeting address any agenda item beforehand and have three minutes. Is that correct?
Okay. Is there a second to that motion as stated?
Second, really?
Yeah, but it kind of morphed into an amended motion, and then it was withdrawn. So now we're making the original motion without a second. Is that right? We're just trying to keep up here, and I think we didn't get an original one because Ms. Balance amended it. There wasn't a second at that point.
She actually said she was seconding and then amending.
And then rescinded.
Okay. Rescinded the amendment or your second? Both?
Amendment.
Okay. So you still have a second for his original motion?
No, it was seconded.
I seconded it with an amendment.
I seconded it and then amended it, and then it withdrew my amendment.
Okay, does that nullify the second?
No.
Okay. All right, the second is still open, that's what I thought.
She has the second.
Okay.
So you have.
So on a roll call vote, this amendment is a bit confusing. All right, the amendment as stated, or the motion as stated and amended, and then unamended, then back to the original statement with a second, and I'm not going to repeat the motion because everybody knows what it is. So roll them in.
Ms. Balance?
No.
Mr. Pownell?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
No.
Mr. Raphael?
No.
Dr. Kirkpatrick?
No.
Mr. DeVito?
No.
One yes, five no's.
Motion fit. Mr. Pownell. Mr. Berry.
I'd like to make a motion that we keep the public comments as it is to have three minutes with three minutes per person during the public comments.
Status quo.
Status quo. Except it is per person.
It is per person, yes it is. Made and seconded? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Six of you. Mr. Pownell, you have anything else? Okay. Okay. Now, my understanding is we're going back to the first item or the second item on unfinished business.
I'm going to take a five-minute break.
Made and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, five minutes. Thank you. We'll be back in session. A point came up during recess that if we go with the current agreement on the second and fourth Monday, we have a meeting next Monday night. So unless you want back-to-back meetings, you want to skip the meeting?
No. No.
Probably yes.
Yes.
All right, I guess we had to vote on it then. Because it'd just be repetitive unless we don't take care of everything on our agenda. Okay, so all in favor of, yes, sir?
How soon would we have an agenda for that meeting?
Exactly.
We probably use the other half of this. Not a bad idea.
Good point, Doc.
New business. We'll just get through old business.
All right. I can't answer that question, can I? I don't know. All right, so all in favor of having the meeting next Monday night as given in the new meeting dates, the second and fourth Mondays of the month? We'll put us a meeting on the ninth, which is four days from now. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, let's do a roll call vote on this. Just to be safe.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Pownell?
No.
Ms. Balance?
No.
Dr. Kirkpatrick?
No.
Mr. DeVito?
No.
Four no's? Oh, two yeses, four no's.
Okay. So we don't have a meeting next Monday night. So that'll put us back on track on the 16th. Okay, I'm sorry, the 23rd? I can't see the little number. Okay, it'll be the 23rd of January, first, the next to the last Monday of the month. Okay. Okay, now, into unfinished business, we'll go with the original number system, so number one is still number one. Ball control update, recommended code changes. Mr. Pownell?
I'd love to discuss.
Mr. Second? Made and seconded? Discussion's open.
I still do not have an update from the city attorney, and that's not one of my discussions in the budget workshop. Chief Hyatt stated that he had no wiggle room to add more hours to the independent contractor contract, which was one of the concerns of the individuals who have sat on and off of the different workshops we've had. It is an enforcement issue, therefore, if you can't have more hours. And the concern being, I don't know how it works as far as the calls, whether he has given out his cell phone number, because I know that he has gotten calls on days off because he's been standing in my driveway talking to me about something else, and he'll get a call to.
All the calls go through PD?
To go somewhere. So if we can't increase the hours, that defeats half the concern of the workshop committee. The other half is waiting to be able to address the changes at the table.
Mr. Berry.
My understanding was that he was quite comfortable with the hours that he had. He didn't really want to extend his hours anymore. In fact, he was kind of against, he was perfectly happy with the way it was, even though he does work more hours than what he gets paid for.
Exactly right, yeah.
I mean, I understand what Mr. Pownell was saying, but he was pretty adamant about not wanting to do that because then that would put him on a have-to basis. He would have to be working, and he'd be committing that, and he'd rather do it as he's doing it now. So I don't know. I mean, I don't know whether that was a problem or not. I know it seemed like it was an issue, but it also seemed like he was pretty well enforcing and didn't seem like he was missing any time when he was getting complaints, I guess is what I'm saying. So.
Any else?
It's not that he's not complaining, he's just spending a lot of time unpaid, supplies unpaid. He was addressed by the workshop. I thought it was necessary to bring it to the table. If he's happy with it the way it is, the only thing that we're waiting for then is to review the proposed changes.
Mr. Weaver, input on that?
As to the code changes, I'm still working on the ordinance. It should be ready at your next meeting. I would also like to report, I understand that four dog violation, ordinance violations were taken care of last month through the court, all with the findings of guilt or bond forfeitures, which are perceived as guilt by the court or looked at as guilt, and fines and costs and others and other punishments. So we are having tickets coming through the system.
Any further? Got no further? We'll go to number two. The non-conforming or sign premises postponed for code updates. Motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss.
Second?
Second.
System matter. It has been reviewed by planning. I haven't had a chance with the holidays and other issues going on to get with Mr. Westwood to see if there was any of the rhetoric in the body of the ordinance that he and I were working with that got changed at the planning commission table. Once that's done, I'd like to reiterate that this is one that involves all the sign issues that everyone is clear, and if they aren't, I'll be more than glad to sit down with them and discuss it, that there are not being any changes made to the code. We are just correcting the, what do you call it, the misnumbering, the administrative portion of it, and the intent is to basically, and the only reason I'm addressing this because there's a couple other issues that are going to be discussed later on, to be able to read the ordinance itself, not the whole thing, in three readings with the emergency clause when it's ready to come to the table. This is strictly an administrative, not has been discussed with codification people at municipal.
Yeah. Motion to postpone till co-corrections are made?
Submissed.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, postpone. Number three is the hospital audit report, hospital lease, Mr. Pownell, Ms. Balance.
Submissed.
Second? Okay. Discussion's open.
Have you been able to get ahold of anybody at?
Yeah. My recommendation would be probably make the meeting and ask these questions instead of having them make an audience in front of the commissioner, the council. You'd probably get more there than you would here due to the fact that we'd have to have it in another room if you had the whole commission here. And I'm sure you'd probably get every answer you want from all members that would be present. I think they made the meeting dates very clear when Mr. Mary was here. Now, placement, whether it be here or at an alternative place, the mess of church, it's worked out depending on availability.
It's not what I was looking for.
What were you looking for?
That someone be able to answer those questions to this table. They aren't answering to the hospital commission, they're answering to us, and a matter of maybe two, three people.
Well, so far, sir, the, my understanding is that every available meeting has not been attended by any council members, which they're absolutely available to do. So if you want all the council, the commission members here, I'll ask them to come.
I believe that's what was asked for. I think there was requested a representative of the company and the chair or someone who can speak on behalf of the commission.
Mr. Weeble.
Well, my knowledge, we had the gentleman attend a meeting, and I agree with you, Mr. Mary, that any further review of the hospital commission would be better served by attending their meeting where all of the commissioners are there. If there are pertinent facts that are discovered at that meeting, then I would hope that the council persons in attendance would bring them back to the entire council.
I will ask the chairman of the committee if they can get Mr. Borderline to come up for a council meeting, which they have a problem getting him to, pardon me, come to the commission meetings because he is apparently a very busy man, according to Mr. Borderline and his associates. Mr. Mitchell is no longer at the hospital, and I'm not real sure who the new director is for Borderline or whatever the name of the company is right now.
Could he at least answer those beginning questions?
Do you want a written response or do you want them here in front of you?
Written response, if it's too much trouble for him to attend.
I will inquire.
When is postponed to the next meeting?
Second.
And seconded? All in favor, say aye.
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 Number four, auditorium commission ordinance review, Mr. Berry, Mr. DeVito.
Need to discuss.
Discussion's open. Mr. DeVito.
This topic came up at the CAPC meeting, and basically to bring council up to speed on where we're at regarding this. The A and P is presently seeming to be on board with providing the personnel for the auditorium and having the city pay the utilities. Both the recommendation of the CAPC and the auditorium committee that was formed as per council desires, all reflect the same opinion that they feel that it's essential to form an auditorium commission. That way, there will be members of the community involved in the operation of the auditorium. They will provide the direction for the CAPC staff that will stay on board, paid for by the CAPC. They felt like it was essential that we have a commission to oversee the operation of the auditorium as we have in the past.
Any else?
Why would this commission be any better than the commission we had in the past? I don't. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
I don't know where that assessment is coming from. You know, we have HDC commissions, planning commissions. There are as good as people who serve on those commissions. There has been past issues with past auditorium commissions that, like every commission, it could be a matter of personnel. It doesn't necessarily impugn the structure that I think is essential to have oversight of the auditorium. I've personally been involved with the auditorium for a number of years and felt that the commission worked quite well, and it has been the recommendation of the committee that this group impaneled. It's also been the recommendation of the CAPC who is going to be providing staff. So I personally don't see any other option to the running of the auditorium. We have it booked for 145 days next year. There's new life in the auditorium. Right now, you have no structure on running the auditorium. You have staff. You don't have a structure. And setting up an auditorium commission, and we have had a number of people in the community willing to serve on that commission, so I feel just like the other commissions in the city that it's imperative that we have someone, a group of people to oversee the auditorium.
Any better? Mr. Pownell?
Well, it seems that now that everything's starting to point towards success, the CAPC is jumping back on the bandwagon to take on the auditorium. If that's the case, I've heard anywhere from six months to a year. The last agreement, I think this table's concerned, first of all, should be who's going to pay the bills, whether there's a commission or not. And the last agreement between the CAPC and the city was a letter dated January 1st, 2010, that spelled out the agreements of who was going to do what and pay what, and I think that'll be the first thing that's addressed before we even look at adding on a burden of another commission.
Mr. Berry.
There is supposed to be an agreement already. Mr. Mayor, have you not received one yet?
It was a rough draft, yeah. I don't agree to all of it, no.
Okay. This is something I think we still need to do. We need to get them all rolling. We have to understand, I think, we, going back again, we have a different attitude toward the auditorium with a different director of the CAPC that was a lot different than the other one. The last time, Mr. Pownell was talking about the director of the CAPC, basically just threw it back in their lap and said, forget it. As far as he was concerned, that building wasn't worth anything and closed it up. He didn't see any value in the auditorium at all. That caused a lot of people in town who do like the auditorium and love the auditorium and have a lot of memories of functions in there, to be a little upset. Our current director is very much thinking that what we have is a crown jewel in the midst of us. Because of the staff of the CAPC, and only because of the staff of the CAPC have they made it a success to date. I'm making it 140-some-ish days booking. It was nothing to do with the city, nothing to do with the mayor, nothing to do with anybody else as far as I know, except the staff of CAPC. So, you know, I think they're to be congratulated because I think the last time, if we were lucky, we may have had, I want to say 25, maybe 40 days of booking last year in the auditorium.
I believe it was less than 50.
Yeah, definitely less than 50. So what we're seeing is, you know, we're having some international bookings in here. We're having a company come in for a month that's going to give your experience just international notice.
Sika Festival, Mr. Thomas Chen.
Exactly. Dr. Chen, and so, you know, I think it's. And so, you know, I think it's our week, we need to support that as much as we can. We're hoping, of course, and I think it's my, my wish, is to see that the auditorium becomes self-sufficient. And I think it can. But that's one of the reasons that we need an auditorium to be able to set up and help direct the functions of that building to make sure it is become self-sufficient. Or whether or not we need to, part of the other recommendation of the committee was to ask the council to endorse a quarter of a cent sales tax for the operation and maintenance of the building. With part of that sales tax going toward reserves for, for maintenance, like tuck pointing of the building, I mean, there's several hundred thousand dollars worth of maintenance that can be done on the building immediately. It's not needed, but it could be done. So, we've also got some other issues. We just went through a meeting with a consultant, heating and air conditioning consultant Wednesday, yesterday, and discovered that the heating coil isn't quite as bad as we thought. I mean, it does need to be repaired, but instead of a $20,000 item, it may be an $1,800 item. And again, those are items that with this grant that we have, the energy grant, can address a lot of those issues. But again, we need a body to be able to help direct those things.
And that's the whole purpose of the commission.
Mr. DeVito.
The other thing to add to what Mr. Berry said, it, it has been the staff, particularly Ray Dillfield, who has brought more bookings in the auditorium. Nobody knows Ray. He's also on, on the board at the Walton Arts Center as the stage manager there. So, he's a highly talented individual. The other aspect in dealing with Mr. Dillfield and the CAPC is that, for the first time, the CAPC is entertaining, marketing the auditorium. And we've never done that before. And Ray's got a lot of expertise in the music business and will have the ability to basically sell the auditorium to promoters. When you see 150 nights in the auditorium, promoters are going to start taking notice. It's going to be a snowball effect. There'll be other private promoters and that's the whole business model that we're trying to embrace is that the CAPC no longer be putting up the money for the acts, but that private promoters come in on, on their own dollar, use our facility. And that's another good aspect that, for the first time in my memory, is that we're actually going to be selling the auditorium.
Mr. Balance.
With all due respect, I find it very presumptuous that there are 145 nights booked in the auditorium right now when the auditorium is, is under the city council right now. And it may be that the city council would like to explore its options of what to do with, with the auditorium. We may decide to do something completely different than to let it go back to the CAPC. We may let it go back to the CAPC, but I think it was not very wise probably for somebody to book 145 nights in an auditorium that they did not have control of. So, I just wanted to put that out there and let people think about that.
Doc?
I don't see reason for a commission whatsoever to get all these bookings in so far. It seems like they're doing a fine job on their own. And I don't see any reason for a commission. Every time we have a commission, it seemed to take over and nobody is in control of them. So, I would be 100% against this.
Mr. Raphael, do you have your hand up?
No, but I will. I'd like to see a special committee that, whose function ends when, when the project is done and I'd like them to look into other options, like Mr. Allen said, that there's other things. How much were they supposed to pay last year, a thousand dollars? I know five people that take it for a thousand dollars.
I applaud the efforts that have been put into it by the CAPC and those that have been mentioned. So, therefore, if we, if we truly do have that many bookings, which they were, I can't find anything that shows an expiration date on this letter of agreement other than effective January 1st, 2010. I'd just like for, since this is a city facility, to allow the, the current success as proclaimed, go forward, but to spell out what responsibilities the CAPC is going to follow and what the city is going to do. And if it's been that successful without a commission, it's not broke, don't fix it. If we're, if we're getting that far along with the strides that the, the committee made and the CAPC's made, I think the only thing we need to do at this point in time is knowing what our financial responsibilities are going to be going into 2012.
Mr. DeVito.
Maybe I didn't make myself clear, but the CAPC doesn't want to run the auditorium. The CAPC is willing to provide two members of staff for the auditorium. They do not want to run the auditorium. This is a transition period. The CAPC has been running the auditorium. They were in the process of moving completely out of the auditorium. We cannot direct the CAPC in any way. They have total autonomy when it comes to what they do with their money. We can ask, we can beg, we can plead, but we cannot direct the CAPC to do anything. So, they have worked hard. They've got very good staff there that, in the transition from the CAPC last year, moving to the city this year, they were able to secure all of these bookings because that's their job, they're doing it. They don't want to run the auditorium. They will provide staff. But you have to understand that we're moving away from the CAPC running the auditorium. So, basically, there's not going to be anybody to run the auditorium. And I don't think we, as a body here, are capable to run the auditorium.
Mr. Berry, you had your hand up.
Yes. This council or commission, city council, asked me to be on, to do the council, form a committee to explore what to do with the auditorium along with Janet Alexander. We met last year. We came up with the basic recommendation, which I presented this council last September, October, that they felt that a commission should be formed. And with the possibility of a sales tax possibly being enacted, if, if council would go along with it, if the people would go along with it, after possibility of seeing how, seeing if a sales tax was needed because of the possibility of the bookings and, and getting it running on its own. We have to, as with any group, you have to plan ahead. If the CAPC hadn't have taken the initiative to plan for these organizations, and we had this one, Dr. Chin, come up and ask if he could use it, they were the person to say yes. That, you know, because at that time, the, the CAPC was still functioning as trying to deal with the auditorium. So, that's the reason why they, they've been successful. Now, I don't think it's fair to them to say that they've been so successful, keep on doing it. Again, as Mr. DeVito said, there was a staff member, Ray Dillfield, and another staff member that's going to be helping down there for a limited time. CAPC is willing, I think, to go, you know, up to a year, but preferably six months, two staff members, even though we've got 145 days that extend over those six months. And there's some issues there that we're still working with the CAPC on. So, I think that, you know, if this commission, council, wants to go ahead and appoint a committee, let's appoint a committee. Let's get a body in here who can make some decisions rather than trying to, to manage the auditorium ourselves, which, you know, we need some, some people in there to do it.
Mr. Balance.
Is there a motion on the table right now?
I don't believe so.
There's a motion to discuss.
Discuss, that's it.
Then I would move to not establish an auditorium commission at this time.
I second.
Any further discussion? Mr. DeVito.
Just like the property you have with parks and, and the Parks Commission to oversee running the parks, we benefit as a community from the volunteer service that people are willing to pay in this community. There are qualified, capable people who are willing to serve on an auditorium committee, I'm sorry, commission, right now. Your other options are to pay an auditorium director. We don't have the money as a city to do that. The CAPC's not interested in doing that and we can't direct them to do that. So, to deny the availability of volunteers in this community, whose love for that auditorium and whose desire is to see it as success and an enhancement to this community, is short sighted to deny that.
Mr. Raphael.
Well, I watched the CAPC meeting and I have a list here somewhere of how much money they dole about. I mean, I, I would love to have the CAPC run it, you know, but show me the money. You know, we have $50,000 there budgeted for this year. For what, what do we do to get that? Let's get something back. We are loaning out the auditorium. And they don't seem, a six-month commitment doesn't sound like they're really super committed to me.
All right. Mr. Berry.
Basically, they're as committed as they can be. Now, if you want them to shut it off, don't shut it off. That's what, and I think I saw an email from you, Mr. Parker, that said, as far as you're concerned, they can turn the lights off. Now, if that's your attitude, that's fine. We just need to make that out in public. If that's what this council wants to do, to board up that auditorium again, then we just need to make that known. And that's basically what we're doing because the CAPC has gone through this, they're not in the business of running that building. They've got two staff members that have been promoting it. And what we get out of this town, we get people into this town. We're going to have people from all over the world coming in for Dr. Chin's route. People that have never seen Eureka Springs before. You can't get that kind of advertising into this town for that. And they, those people have been coming to us and saying, we like this venue, we like that building, we like that auditorium, we want to play there. Now, if this council says, we don't want you, that's a different story. And we just tell them, forget it, we don't want you.
Mr. DeVito.
For a long time, the community has been very concerned about the auditorium and its condition. Through the hard work of the Community Development Partnership, they were able to secure a Save America's Treasures grant of $250,000. CAPC and the city matched that grant, thereby providing a half a million dollars to bring this auditorium up to the quality that it has and the ability to attract interested parties. Right now, if we continue with this micromanagement aspect and the inability to form a commission to oversee the day-to-day operations of this facility, this body is not going to appropriate the money to do that, not the money to appropriate a director. We have the ability to allow ourselves, volunteer staff in this community, to take over running this facility and enhance it to bring revenue into this community. And 150 dates booked at, at what the auditorium, plus concessions and everything else attended to that, motel rooms, gifts, meals in restaurants. I, I just, you know, I'm the only business person on this council. I understand business. And to do this, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. This is a travesty perpetrated on the community. If we don't form this commission, the auditorium will go dark. We may have six months of good business and, and I'm sorry, I, I'm appalled.
Okay. Any further?
Yes.
Yes.
I resent Mr. DeVito's comments that this table doesn't care. Number one, it's on the agenda. It says, I believe, the exact words. And I'd like to also ask the city attorney if he's reviewed the said proposed ordinance establishing the auditorium commission.
If you don't have a different one than the one I wrote, I think I did, yeah.
If you look at the, the commissions that we currently have and the vacancies and the wording with the commission being the only electors in the city of Eureka Springs, I have not, you know, other than, than people expounding upon their indignation of, of the attitudes of, of certain people at the table, the first thing that I can see based on the way it's on the agenda is I haven't heard a single motion to, to sign a number and put it on its first reading. All we're doing is sitting here pointing fingers and saying that this table doesn't care. My only concern is how long is it going to take to, to get that commission up and running? And as of 1 January, we don't have any agreement that says what we're going to do for the odd. CAPC doesn't have anything back that says what they're going to do. And until that is agreed upon, and while we're in the middle of trying to get that going, I feel like we need the agreement to know how we're going to cover the expenses unless, you know, somebody's going to drop a big golden egg. But, you know, I, you know, there is, hasn't been anything said about, you know, making a motion to, to read, assign a number and read the, all we're doing is sitting here yelling at each other.
Mr. Berry.
There is a motion on the floor and that's what we're discussing.
Mr. DeVito. Okay, go ahead.
And the, you know, we can always make, I mean, depending on what happens on the motion on the floor, we can always make another motion to do exactly what you're saying, what Mr. Pannell's saying. And we still have the readings at three times. So, we have plenty of time to establish what exactly the responsibilities between the city and the auditorium's going to be. The main thing, my, my thought is similar to Mr. Pannell's with it, this needs to be getting going. And Ms. Balance has already made a motion to, not to establish an ordinance or a commission. So, that's the motion on the table, as I understand it. That's what we're discussing.
Mr. DeVito.
Well, the reason I haven't made a motion to approve this is because we are in discussions with the CAPC as to what their role's going to be. We've discussed whether it be a six-month agreement or a one-year agreement. Right now, the CAPC has offered staff. You've received a rough draft of an agreement. I would move that we delay this until those agreements are reached.
There's a motion on the table.
I can second that. That's a motion to table, which precedes your motion, if I'm not mistaken.
I don't think so. I don't think it does.
Motion to table?
Are you sure? Be sure before you do this.
That's, that's one of the, yeah, that's one of the four or five that take precedent.
Okay. There's a motion to table this until agreement is reached with the CAPC. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Motion? Okay. Any further discussion before we go on? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Three, three? Is this one I can vote on or not vote on?
I know of no reason you can't.
But we wait until we get, get the agreement reached. We tend to lose a lot of business if we not follow through with this. I don't see it good for the city if we don't follow through with it. Yes?
What was your vote?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. Yes, we wait. All right.
Postpone until when? Till we reach an agreement with the CAPC.
Yeah. Like I said, we've got the rough draft, we're working on something. I don't agree with everything that's on it, so we're working on it. All right, next, number five, discussion of state law 14-35-206, sure committee, 14-34-116, 14-35-207, Mr. Pannell and Ms. Balance.
Discuss.
Discussions open.
Defer to the city attorney of status of the ordinance.
I've looked at the document that you forwarded to me and ordinance form. I have no problem in the way it's drafted. It will function if it is the desire of the council to adopt it. I see no technical errors or legal ramifications that need to be pointed out at this time.
State statute provides that we shall have a sewer committee. So I'm in favor of moving forward with this. However, I have just a few comments right now about the ordinance as it is written and as the city attorney says that he doesn't see any problem with it. But just at a glance, one of the first things that jumped out at me was in section one of the ordinance that we are considering, it says, "The sewer committee shall be composed of two aldermen and three citizens from the general electorate nominated, nominated by the mayor and approved by the city council." And when I look at state statute, it says right here, "shall be affected and supervised by a committee to be designated for that purpose by the municipal council." It doesn't say the mayor should nominate them and the city council should approve them. It says it should be designated for that purpose by the municipal council. So right then, immediately, I see that this ordinance is proposed is in conflict with the state statute. Also, it says here, "Committee members shall serve for a term of three years from the date of final confirmation." Well, now, if it's two aldermen and three citizens, there's no guarantee that two aldermen are still going to be the aldermen three years from the date of the final confirmation. So does that mean that those aldermen will stay, will continue to be on the sewer committee? Or is this something that doesn't make sense because they will no longer, you know, it's very possible that they would not be aldermen?